Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our master planning special meeting. Please join me in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And without further ado, I understand there's a presentation that we need to miss. Dr. Rick, do you have any comments?
I do. Good evening, everybody. Thanks so much for the work for meeting with us in this special meeting. It's a very exciting meeting. This is a long time coming. The Master Planning Committee started its work back in 2018, was getting ready to present to the Board of Education right at the outset of the COVID-19 pandemic. So this is a great victory, I guess, in the sense that we're another sort of indicator that we're moving back into the right direction away from the pandemic. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ann, and she'll introduce our colleagues, and we'll get right into it.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rick. And we did send out, because a lot of thanks goes to that master planning committees and subcommittees that met tirelessly, you know, starting in 2018, and we did invite them to participate in viewing this meeting. Tonight, we have with us from H2M, Guy Page, Mike Lantier and Gold Kalansky, and from Triton Construction, Kevin Sawyer and Fred Camilli. And Mike, I'm going to turn it over to you, and he'll, you know, take us through what our thinking is at this point.
Sure. Thank you, Ann. Thank you, Dr. Rick. It's very nice to meet everyone. Very, very excited to be here tonight, because like we've mentioned, this has been kind of the culmination of what we've been working on for the last couple of years. And it's just a pleasure to be able to present it to the board at this point. So like Ann mentioned, my name is Michael Lantier. I've been with H2M now for over 15 years. I started out on the engineering side as an electrical engineer, and very quickly found my role really being primarily in the K through 12 market, providing support to many school districts throughout the tri-state area. And that really has led me now to a leading role assisting our, really all of our clients in the K through 12 market on every type of level right now, primarily on, you know, pre-bond and bond referendums as well. So with that, I will begin to share my screen and the presentation. So this presentation is geared towards providing it not so specifically to the Board of Education, but really to anyone moving forward. So there's some information in here about my background and really to what has led us to where we are right now. So I begin by introducing anyone attending to H2M. I know that the board is familiar with our role and who we are, so I won't go into too much detail. But both basically, we're a multi-disciplined architectural and engineering firm with the ability to really provide any type of service that would be needed through the planning, the design, the construction administration, and the bidding process that goes along with school construction. Number of locations throughout the tri-state area. And again, a lot of our services that we are able to provide are included. And for a general presentation, I would go through these services in more detail and answer any questions about what we can provide. And again, for the background, just really some of our clients that we have the experience working with really throughout the tri-state area and even across the nation at this point. You can proceed to the next slide. So to familiarize ourselves and our relationship with the White Plains School District, we have been the architect and engineer of record for White Plains Public Schools since 2012. And since 2012, we have been able to assist the school district with the design, bidding and construction administration of really more than $100 million worth of construction projects throughout the district. Some of our notable projects, again, I won't go into too much detail to the board right now. But for a public presentation, I would discuss just really some of our largest projects. Most notably really is Eastview Middle School, which was that beautiful full building renovation. And then the district-wide network upgrades, which brought the gigabit passive optical network to the desktop, high-speed internet for the entire district, as well as the Comfort Stations and numerous other projects throughout the district. You can go to the next slide. So other services that we provide to the district are our annual visual inspections, as well as our five-year building condition surveys. So what this entails is a team of different architects and engineers to walk through really every space in every building throughout the district. And really what this allows us to do is get every type of our engineer, our structural engineers, our mechanical engineers, our electrical engineers into the spaces and really gain an intimate knowledge of all of the buildings and all of the areas. It helps us also with the planning for the master plan, any future capital projects or any operational projects as well. We also proceed with planning with administration and the applicable committees as well. So this master plan process specifically, which really has led us to this meeting, did begin almost three years ago, believe it or not, back in 2018. And we did stall a little bit with the pandemic, but in the background, we kept the priority list and the construction budgets ongoing, so we can continue to really develop the plan and the process. And to date, we have developed a full extensive list of priorities of numerous work items and schematic plans really showing the locations throughout the district. And we've reviewed these items with the administration, with the principals, with IT, and the applicable committees as well, such as facilities, athletics, as well as education. After we had all of these projects and different items listed, we then went into prioritizing them, along with the assistance of the administration and the committees, to determine really what were the needs and what really is the process that we want to proceed with. So we then prioritized these into three groups, 1, 2, and 3. And then we further broke down these groups into subgroups, which contain the capital improvements and then projects that can be considered operational or maintenance work. So the question may come up specifically when we're dealing with the community. You know, why do we need this additional work? You know, we just went through the bond process in 2010, 2011, and we just really completed some of that work as well. And there was a lot of funding that was required to complete that work. But the really, the fact of the matter is, is that a lot of the buildings, which is typical for the tri-state area, have been, were originally constructed a long time ago. Specifically in this district, I have the years included. And you'll see that there are a number of buildings that are, believe it or not, either approaching or over the 100-year mark. And there's newer technologies that are obviously available now that were not available when these buildings were originally constructed. And our teams went in and we took that approach to see, you know, what new technologies are available? How can these newer technologies be implemented into these buildings? And how much is it going to cost to implement them, as well as the infrastructure? You know, what are the priorities that we need to do in order to really maintain a safe and state-of-the-art building for our community? So the first item that kept coming up as a priority with anyone that we spoke with, with administration or the committees, were really the ventilation filtration and air conditioning needs. And this came to be a priority even before the pandemic. And the pandemic really has even pushed this into more of the forefront. But that was something that was really on our forefront as really being a priority as we progressed with putting this presentation and this master plan together. So as we look at the schools, many of the classrooms right now use older unit ventilators with either little or no filtration to provide outdoor air to the classrooms. And most of the classrooms do not currently have air conditioning. There are select rooms that do use window units. And as we all know, students spend about 75% of their time in these classrooms. Right now, with previous work, most of your common spaces, your auditorium, your gymnasiums, your cafeterias, your main offices are currently air-conditioned. We've broken down the funding required to air-condition all the classroom spaces. And you'll see that we're looking at about $26 million total for a full ventilation filtration and air conditioning upgrade for the classrooms. It's broken down on a per-school level as well. And the anticipation right now is to fund these not so much through a bond, but to be able to fund them through grants that we are seeing becoming available within. Some of them are starting to become available now, as well as within the next year to two years. And then the remaining has the potential to be paid from capital reserve. As your architect and engineer, sorry, as your architect and engineer, we do recognize the ongoing maintenance and utility costs, and that is something that we do continue to work on, because that is a question that the community really rightfully has to ask. You know, what is it going to cost us to continue to maintain these? And what are the utility costs associated with using this air conditioning or this additional filtration? So we will develop those costs, and we will be fully transparent if we do proceed and present this to the public. So through the master planning process, we put together really this workflow to create this overall vision that we saw for the district. And it really started with a vocational addition over at the high school. It was an approximately 100-square-foot addition. And the next slide that I get to will really show you the specifics. But the intention would really be to start off with that, as well as a couple of the other items that are listed at the bottom of the screen right now, such as district-wide charging stations. And again, we saw that need come up as more students now are using laptops, and now that they're bringing them to and from home, as well as maker spaces, other ventilation upgrades, exhaust fan, bathroom exhaust upgrades. And district-wide generators could be completed also in that beginning step. But really primarily, it would be this large vocational addition. Once that addition is completed, we would look to then move the programs from Ed House right now in Rochambeau into that addition, so then we can complete step two, which would be a full renovation, an interior renovation of Rochambeau, and then a full renovation of Education House. Once those two, or really once the work at Rochambeau is completed, then we would transfer the students from Highlands into Rochambeau, and we can really continue to completing that vision, which would be then really finalizing a full renovation at Highlands. So at the end of these steps, you would then have Post Road, which is a newer school. You'd have Eastview, which has been fully renovated. You would have Rochambeau, Highlands, Ed House, and your new addition at the high school. So you would really have basically district-wide of newer renovations throughout. One thing to note, too, in step one, we do understand that the staff and the programs from Damon House would be relocated. So that's the Family Information Center, Professional Development, Nurse and IT would be relocated during that time when we demolish Damon House and we continue with that addition.
Mike, Kane has a question?
Yeah, and you answered it as my hand was up. So the high school vocational addition, that's not a temporary structure then, that's...
Correct. Perfect timing. Let's go. Yeah, we can move right to the next slide. So this is a really exciting slide and a really exciting addition for a design professional like myself, as well as for a school district. Because an addition like this really provides so many really beautiful and great opportunities for students within the district. We're looking, and we've carved out spaces really for everything that you see on the screen. But most notably, I mean, floriculture, you have a greenhouse space. You have a production area, a dance studio, visual arts, really some nice areas, nice programs that can be included as part of this addition. And it provides some flexible space, too. You'll see that there's some classrooms listed up here. Some of them would be permanent classrooms, and then other areas would be classrooms that have the ability to be used for multipurpose or multifunctional areas. And again, similarly to the ventilation and air conditioning, we also recognize your ongoing maintenance and utility costs, as well as staffing costs. And we are continuing to work with administration to develop the staffing costs, and H2M is working on providing the maintenance costs. So we are fully transparent when we do present to the public.
There are four hands up now. Kane, is yours still up, or is that a new hand?
All right. I put my hand back down.
That's okay. And Rosemary, you were next?
Yeah, just about this addition for the high school vocational addition. I'm seeing things in here like drop-off area. So this is more than addition, an addition. This is going to really impact like current drop-off. Like, I don't know if I'm looking too granular now, but it's more than an addition. It's going to really impact the flow of, I guess, activity at the high school?
So the intention with certain areas, there are ancillary spaces that are going to be required for a building addition of this size. And, you know, to not impede on the current traffic flow, we would redevelop some of the drop-off areas specifically in that area. And we would also provide additional parking in that area as well.
Okay, so it's additional parking. So the parking as it is now would stay? And this would be additional teacher parking, administration parking, and all that?
Correct. Yeah, we would have to provide additional parking for the additional occupants of that building.
And it looks like we have Rose, and Randy, and Jim, and Cheryl. So we'll just go right down the line.
Hi, Rose. Hi. So I'm seeing that it looks like all of Central Office will be moving to this new space. What happens to Ed House?
So the intention for Ed House, which I have on a couple of slides as well, is to use it for some other spaces as well, for some other programs. Most notably, it was for district learning, to use it for a learning space for your teachers, for your staff. And there was the discussions of using that for possibly, I believe, a daycare as well. But as we get further into the slides, we'll see. I just don't recall offhand the other uses, but we...
Really, like Damon House, all the many of the services that are presently in Damon House would move to Ed House. You think of registration, those types of areas for functionality.
What would happen to Damon House?
It gets demolished. Randy?
Rose asked my question about Ed House, although I can't imagine Ed House without extraordinary renovations doing anything with daycare a lot. I mean, Ed House needs a lot of work. It's a beautiful building. I love the building, but...
So the idea is to maybe do preschool, to have some student space, because we want to try to, you know, whatever renovations are necessary so that we can make it heatable. So that was really the intent behind that thinking.
Great question. Cheryl?
So I have a few questions. So I'm curious about the name vocational. It seems to me that this is far more inclusive of many other things than what I would consider to be vocational. So I'm sort of curious about the name and whether, you know, it ought to be called something else.
It was just a temporary name that we...
Where is this to be located on the campus?
It would replace Damon House with a slightly larger footprint. Right now, conceptually, we are looking at a three-story structure with a bridge connecting the wing to the high school.
And is the idea then not only to be moving whatever's housed in Ed House permanently to this addition, but also Rochambeau, the programs at Rochambeau would be permanently moved to here? And if so, then what happens to Rochambeau? I saw that Highlands was going to move into Rochambeau, but was that meant to be temporary? Or is that also a permanent move?
That's a temporary swing for Highlands into Rochambeau, but then we have flexibility and opportunity for the facility of Rochambeau. As you know, right now, we have about 74 students in Rochambeau. And with this switch in location, you would now be able to have students closer to the high school community and with the opportunity to participate in high school-level classes that are offered only at White Plains High School, not offered at Rochambeau. And then we would have the opportunity to look at Rochambeau to utilize that facility for things like expanding pre-K or again, additional classroom swing space and the like.
Okay, and just another last question in terms of funding. So I was on the finance committee when this sort of started, I think. And I know that priorities kept shifting, and we were worried about, you know, how much funding we had and what we would do first. So this seems like a grand plan at this point. Are we anticipating now utilizing a lot of the money that we're getting, you know, through the government? Is that the idea? Is it possible to do these things, or...?
No, and we'll get to that in a couple more slugs, Cheryl, when we get down to the rest of the story. This is just sort of the first look at what this new facility would look like. And again, try and conceptualize. It's hard to conceptualize if you're looking at a slide. Try and conceptualize this over where Damon House is as, you know, a new area, a new instructional area, 21st century, and then utilizing the rest of the facilities to swing. But we'll get to the costs.
Thank you.
Sure. Did I miss any other questions? I'm so sorry. No? Jim, sorry.
No, I mean, I think this is, it's good to see this. Some thoughts that I have when I first see it, and this is, I think that's what this is for, right? An opportunity for us to share our thoughts. There's a lot of new things here, a lot of things that the Board of Ed and the White Plains Schools don't currently provide, and we really, as a board, we've not contemplated them. And I think to do something like this and to move forward with a program like this, we'd want to put a lot more meat behind, just behind the conceptual work. So I think there'd be a lot of work about that. Things that I think about, of course, we're component members of BOSI's, and we use that program well. And, you know, are there things that they're not doing that we can do? And I take you at your word with what you say, a vocational addition. I see it's going to be many things, but it's, you know, it's the Board of, it's, you know, you look at different things, it's a daycare center. Well, that's certainly something that we would be taking on that's new, that we currently don't take on. And as we look at our alternative high school and relocation of that program, it would be really informative to know what our program review tells us about our alternative high school, if we had some sort of a program review ahead of time, because it would give us an indication of where we're deficient and what direction we want to move in. And I think those are things that would be helpful as we continue the discussion and think about things moving forward.
So the school-specific projects that we listed as priorities for a number of different reasons, either it was continuously brought up from a committee or it was something that really should be handled as a priority for a specific school. I have them listed. I won't go into too much detail, but you see that charging stations throughout schools. So that's charging stations for laptops. And maker spaces are a common theme as well. And then some additional exhaust fan replacements. Also included on this slide are the costs for your Highlands renovation, that vocational or addition at the high school that we just discussed, as well as some of the other projects included at the high school, and then the renovation over at Ed House, as well as Rochambeau. This also does include the demolition and new construction of the field house. And that would also include a new health and wellness area.
Why maker space only at Church Street?
That came up as a priority on one of the committees for Church Street, but that's, you know, something that we can consider to include across the board as well.
I see for MAS, too.
Yeah, I think it's always good to know where we stand across all of our schools with specialized spaces.
So the Phase 1 Priority 1 construction costs right now are approximately $92 million. That does not include that $26 million for the ventilation and filtration or air conditioning. And we can move on to the next slide as well.
Quick question. I'm sorry. So nothing about the facilities, the fields, the tracks, nothing there?
If you could just, if we could go right back to the previous slide, please. So in this one, as far as facilities or fields, we did not include them in a Priority 1. There were just a number of other items that were listed as priorities. We do have the renovation of the field house, however, included in here. And then if we go into Priority 2, for the field house, we do include some additional athletic facilities. We are including turf for softball and the baseball fields over at the high school, as well as turf and lighting for Field 10 over at the high school.
Can you go back to Priority 1 for a minute? I mean, I see cafeteria building addition on White Plains High School. So that's a second addition for the high school?
That is a smaller addition, yes. It's my understanding that right now there is just not enough space to keep all of the students in the district or in the building during cafeteria, during a lunch period. So the addition was brought up as a priority.
And where would that be?
I don't think we discussed a specific location for it yet. We just determined the square footage that would be required.
And as we have this discussion, I think one of our problems with cafeteria capacity is because of our unified lunch, one-period lunch, which drives some of our other space considerations. So I don't think it'd be out of the ordinary for us to have a discussion of what it would look like if we didn't do this, and what our room capacity would look like.
Michael, I just had a quick question about the maker space, and I saw Rose had asked. I think it's, my understanding is it's a space for, you know, 3D printers, for kids to do collaborative work. I just, I personally, you know, would just caution us, as we look at our library as those spaces, to not sacrifice our books and assume it's all going to go digital, and that we still make an effort to have a library in our buildings, because many kids do prefer a physical book over, you know, a digital resource. I do love the idea of a maker space, but I absolutely love a library, you know.
What we've been doing is that we've been changing some of the computer spaces now, you know, to maker spaces.
Yeah, I mean, if we're going to do them in one or two buildings, my inclination is that we should be doing them in all the, you know, elementary spaces.
And that's where we're looking at mostly in computer rooms, as where kids are using iPads now.
And then we got into the Priority 2, projects that were really important. However, we may have a little bit more time before we need to, or we'd like to really implement them. So we moved them into a Phase 2 priority. A lot of these items were backup generators for the schools for specific items, such as some of your life safety equipment, as well as your walk-in refrigerators or your walk-in freezers. There were some other areas, such as roofs, that we would look to have done within some time period as well, some ADA improvements, and then some corridor floor, ceiling, things that are very important. However, we would have a little bit of time before we would need to address a lot of these items.
You may get to this, and I apologize if I'm jumping in too soon. You know, a few years ago, we saw, you know, possible plans about expanding a number of our, you know, school buildings. And although I see it for the high school, how does this all fit into, you know, sort of demographics and space consideration and student populations in the different buildings?
One of the things to consider is that you're freeing up an entire facility through, again, in broad strokes. We're just talking broad strokes right now.
Right, right.
Which then would allow flexibility, which the district really does already have. When you look at our demographic profile, when you look at the projections that we have, and when you look where the placement of our programming is, with changes to where programming is placed right now, you could reconfigure the utilization of the facilities and really minimize, you know, any potential squeeze, if you, for term, but you know what I mean, tight fits in the facilities as they are. Tight, tight fits in the, in the facilities as they are right now. Yeah, so that's kind of, again, broad conceptually.
I just remember when we were interviewing different firms that that was one of the things that, you know, seemed to be part of all the presentations were how we might add on to different, you know, school buildings.
Yep, I remember that too.
And, and that was also based on the fact that we had done a demographic study back in 1617, and then we, we kept updating those demographics. And you know, all of these components all came out of the, the work that the master planning committee did. And you remember Veronica was really running those committees, you know, Mike has just stepped in since her leaving. And, you know, we've had a couple of sessions before the pandemic with finance to try to go through and try to tease through these priorities. And then we were cut off before we were coming to the board with what that work had been. So it's, it's a little disjointed, but again, it's just trying to go through what those priorities were from that committee. And then it's going to certainly be up to us to kind of tease through as to what the board thinks is appropriate. We need your guidance and, you know, an understanding of, 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 you know, just the climate out there and what we think is possible. I think, you know, once we get, Mike gets through, you know, the rest of the presentation, we'll be able to then really kind of look at, you know, what do we do next, you know? We just, you know, knew that we needed to bring this work back from where we had left it off.
Yeah, that's a really important point, and thank you for, for the folks who are going to be watching this at home later on to, to recognize that we're not, this is not a, a completed proposal. This is an initial showing to the Board of Education of the work that was done by the Master Planning Committee two years ago, three years ago almost now.
So this next slide really talks about operational projects. We took a look at all of the projects and the items that were listed as priorities, and we separated them into capital improvements and then operational or maintenance projects that would be able to be funded by, by your, your annual operating budgets. So this just gives you a little snippet of, of additional work that would still be included, but it wouldn't be funded potentially by a bond. But it would be funded really by, by your annual operating budgets. That includes, you know, boiler, boiler work, wall, masonry work, some interior renovations, your sidewalk repairs, some stair repairs, and then some work in the high school to refinish some of the areas within, within the pool addition. And then some, some ADA work as well.
Indoor recess bubble. How about that?
Wow.
So additional items, and we didn't, we didn't list any, everything that we, that was come, that came up as a priority as we did our building condition surveys or our inspections, and we put together the list of priorities. But there are a number of additional items that we did bring up, but they were work that can be included further on down the line. When I say further on, it could be, you know, seven, eight, nine years as the funding became available. But we did put together a full comprehensive list, broken down as per infrastructure, program space renovations, program space additions, as well as field and ground and athletic upgrades as well.
Including a wrestling room.
Including a wrestling room.
I assume that was you, Dr. Rick, circling that?
I don't know, Dr. Stein, I, I don't know.
So Randy, I don't even see why the 50-meter pool addition wasn't highlighted.
Sorry, boss.
Frank's, Frank's really been pushing us for this vehicle shelter too, but we ended up pushing.
But that was the point of the master plan, right? What is that multiple phases of work and identifying everything in the long view to make sure that we have it on our radar and then going through and teasing out what those priorities are?
So, um, quick question, Anne. So the actual design of new spaces and everything in schools, I mean, I guess it's an opportunity to really look at what works in terms of what's good for teachers and students and collaboration and individual work. Like, I envision that would take time and that piece, I'm interested to know how that would, would it just be the design from the company? Or do, are we going to go and look at novel spaces for us that would work good in White Plains? Or designing of, of spaces?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask Mike and actually Guy Page. So in, when, so the first thing is conceptual as to identifying all those things that we need to look at and prioritizing them. But once we have, you know, a sense of that scope of work, and feel free somebody who's an architect to jump in, then they go into designing, tightening up the, 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 you know, the scope of work and the finance piece of it, and us working with fiscal advisors, and I think Mike has that on a, a later slide. And then it's not until there is authorization from the voters, you know, as far as the funding and everything else, and they get into the technical design and meeting with all the constituents and making sure that that's really, you know, what they're going to submit to facilities planning. Please correct me if I'm wrong, somebody.
And is it like building a new school? I mean, I remember when, you know, we were designing the new post road, right? I mean, there were all these committees and various people and committees and groups of people weighing in on priorities without the design.
Correct. Yeah, it, it really is our priority to, to, to work as a, as a team. H2M would, would not design really any of this in, in a bubble. Yes, when we get down to the technical details and, you know, the engineering requirements, that's something that we had on the backend. But the functionality of the spaces is decided, decided upon really by the community members and by the administration, as well as we look for input from, from, from the staff as well to make sure that we're developing these spaces as a team and they're providing you everything that, that, that you really need and you want out of, you know, whether it's a renovation or, or an addition.
Yeah, I think if I chime in, when we did Eastview, we, we had a whole committee, including Joe Clardy, and we went through. And we had, we came up with a whole list of things, and then we went back and said, this is what you can, what you can't. But remember, at that time, we were actually, we were actually making that a sixth grade academy. So we ended up making changes to accommodate the sixth grade academy. So it was really a team effort there. And I think if you speak to the teachers who were involved in it, they were very pleased.
We try to build flexibility into the spaces too. So we, we, I mean, we understand that, that curriculum changes, space needs changes. Your demographics may change as well, and a lot of these spaces are built with that flexibility, whether it's just, you know, an open concept plan or an area that has furniture that, that, that can be moved. I'm, I'm sorry though, Guy.
No, I was gonna say, I was just gonna add, I think Anne hit, hit it on, on the head as well in terms of the process. But the, 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 the point we're at now, as we develop this a little further and presenting it to the public, I know visuals is important. You mentioned a couple of questions earlier about where the additions would be, how they would look. So I think there's a step that we would want to enhance what we have here presenting tonight as we narrow down what that scope is going to be so that we could have some more graphics. But that, those graphics would definitely be further developed with the committee, as, as Frank said, and, and others added, in developing that scope in detail, meeting the plan, meeting the needs of the district. But there is a step that's going to have to happen between now and, and some of the presentations to the public so they could see a little more graphically how this is going to improve the facilities that you're proposing.
Yep, and, and I was looking here at the STEM lab renovations. I mean, to me, that is, you know, it's so important, not STEM, being lab, you know, just the labs and how they are and, and really cutting edge and state of the art and all that, you know? That's going to be the interest of the, um,
The public.
Yeah.
Yeah, as, as you talk about it, as Mike brought up, how many of our buildings are close to 100 years old? So we are going to be building this plan for, you know, doesn't sound too dramatic, for the next 100 years, right? If we're creating new spaces, we, we want them to be able to, to serve for that period of time. At the same time, I think we want to make sure we're clearly defined, and that's kind of where I'll be on this, is let's, let's be clearly defined in what we want to do and make sure we have a broad section of participants throughout the community, because that's, we're going to need buy-in and we're going to need participation. And all of these things are important because it's, it's going to be around for so long. And just two things on the fields and grounds and athletics. You know, one of our most widely used fields, not necessarily for schools, is Eastview. It's a widely used field and, and the track as well, and it's not even a real quarter mile track. So, you know, I, I certainly would be, if we have a wish list, it'd be great to throw that on there. If, if you're accepting additions, and also LEDs for our field lights. It's, it's, uh, the cost is coming down, it's still expensive, we know that. But it provides better light, less light pollution, and certainly an energy savings. So again, for the wish list.
Totally. This, perfect timing though. Miss Eller, you brought up a good point, kind of what does this timing actually look like? You can go to the next slide, yep. So we do have some dates here for, for really step one and step two and step three of when, when the construction would, would begin and most likely as a, as a construction would end. And, and it is a time-consuming process. The, the, it's very detailed designing the projects once we do have full voter approval. And then, and then we have to wait for the State Education Department to do their full review before we can go out and, and, and first receive a permit and then go out to bid, to, to, to receive contractors to actually do the work. So we would be looking sometime around a 2023 start, and, and, and the work that I've discussed so far would continue on until at least 2027. So it is a very long duration and a detailed process.
What kind of date is that predicated upon in terms of voter approval? When are we thinking about that, which then leads to this timeline?
There are a couple of different timelines in the next slide, Gerald, that you'll see. One's very aggressive and one's very conservative, well, more conservative.
So these, these, uh, these are geared more towards the aggressive schedule, but there are still a lot of unknowns. The, namely is the, the State Education review time. It, it's just constantly fluctuating with the amount of time that they need to review these, these processes. So this slide looks familiar, this is the same slide that you saw a few slides ago, but it includes just some additional information on, on the funding sources that we're considering to, to complete this work. Really primarily on the right side of the screen, we have it broken down with the, the ventilation, the air conditioning filtration being funded by the grants, state, federal DASNE, as well as the Capital Reserve. And then the breakdown between the different additions, the full renovations, and then the other remaining items and, and, and the associated funding with them.
I guess this might be for Anne. So how much do we have now in capital reserves? I've kind of lost track. And how much do we anticipate asking for another bond?
So, um, two, two kind of separate things. So I think the focus for the Capital Reserve and the, and what is going to be the balance of that Capital Reserve as of this June, which we just reviewed with Finance Committee, that coupled with the federal monies that are, that are coming through, that we anticipate that covering all the ventilation and air filtration work, including the air conditioning. And then, you know, every year, we're, we're continuing to make deposits into the Capital Reserve. So that's, that, you know, we would certainly continue to look for that to help with any, you know, bond authorization that we're looking for. And the bond authorization doesn't have to be all at once. It depends on, you know, the, the scope of the work, the timing of the work, and what we do with our fiscal advisors, who is, you know, certainly going to work with us on making sure that we're timing these bonds to kind of offset bonds that are falling off, or, you know, fully paid bonds that we expect in '25, '26. So it's a combination, and that work has to still get done once we, you know, kind of zero in on that scope and kind of have a sense of, of, of what the plan is.
But the expectation would be one big, oh, just one big bond vote then? At least to start with, on, as opposed to not, we wouldn't be thinking about breaking it up into sort of different years of bond votes, or?
I think it, it's, it's, it's really going to be what this collective group really thinks makes the best sense for having the authorization and, and, and what is appropriate, and then working with the fiscal advisors with that, as far as how to, to really lay out what that cash flow plan is. Rose, I didn't hear the last thing that you were saying. You know, did you had, did you have a follow-up to what you were?
No, I actually said, thank you for, for answering my next question with my first question.
Yeah, um, so, you know, can we just switch maybe to Mike to that next slide? So, I mean, I, I, I think, you know, when you go through this, it's really, you know, what is our scope of work? That's really going to tell us and lead us down this road and really working with, understanding what, what aid might be available. And then really working with the fiscal advisor to really nail down what our borrowing should look like. And quite honestly, what are, what are authorization that we're asking for? Next year, we would want to go, we don't have to get authorization for the federal dollars to help with the air filtration replacement. But if we're going to use Capital Reserve dollars, we would need to put up that ask next year for that part of the project, which we, I think, have identified that that's really something we want to try to accomplish first, the air filtration and ventilation work.
And Anne, I'm, I'm sorry, just to, um, to, to, for some clarity. So if we were to have a bond referendum for a certain amount, we don't have to do that all at once, right? Once it's approved, then we could diva- decide, decide how to break it up in a way that would be advantageous, right?
Correct, correct.
And, and isn't there a time limit that we have from the time of voter authorization to the time of the, the beginning of a project? Like five years or something? Does the state have some sort of a statutory limit?
Well, um, I, I'd have to check, Jim. I know that you certainly don't want to borrow the money and get, you know, jammed up with arbitration. You know, as far as, you know, that's concerned, you know, and that's something we can verify. I'm not sure if the architect or our construction manager can weigh in. I mean, normally, you know, you borrow and you're, you're sorting construction and you're using those dollars, but we'll find that out from legal.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking at the further, things further down on the list. Again, it goes to strategy on, on moves forward and what the voters vote on.
Like, you might not want to get the authorization for Highlands up front because that's so far down the road, you know? You know, you first have to renovate these other buildings in order to have the space to swing those kids in, you know, to do that renovation. So that, those are the things we have to, we have to now move forward and really talk about once, once we start to think about what our scope is.
Really just touch on the next steps, which you, you really covered, covered most of them. But, but the next steps really would be, we collectively agree to this, to the scope of the work. We would have the construction manager review the cost to confirm a value. We want to make sure that what we're going out to the public with does, you know, really, really meet the funding requirements. We, we need to, you know, reconsider any current trends. Right now, they seem to be changing almost daily, so it's something that we would consider and really hone in before we present a number to the public. We would estimate the aid so that, so the school district knows how much they will most likely get in return. We would review it with the, your fiscal advisor and, and estimate, like you mentioned, when those drawdowns would occur. We would then review with marketing. We would complete the secret review, we would look to have that secret review completed before we have the Board of Ed formally vote on the bond referendum. So you would vote on the secret at the same time as the, as the bond referendum. And then we would put it out on the street and advertise the bond, and, and, and then we would determine that bond vote. And then when we go to the next slide, we'll see really all of this work broken down into two, two schedules. The first one on the left is, is a, is a very aggressive schedule, but we wanted to present that schedule as something that would potentially be feasible, that would require a scope of work determination really in the early, early days of July. And that would then have us proceeding with these, the different steps that I mentioned, and, and that would end or result really in, in a bond vote in, in middle of December before the new year. The reason that we wanted to also provide this is really the benefits that, that we see as a, as an architectural and engineering firm, where we put these bond resolutions out to vote. And we see them to be successful more so in, in the fall, before winter time for, for one reason or another. Right now, also where we are really economically and really with the community members are very highly supporting schools. As a parent, I know that I for sure appreciate. As a parent, I know that I for sure appreciate everything that my school district has done over the last year. It's been very difficult for all of us, but those support levels are are extremely high right now. The con really of this right now is that expedited schedule. It does, it keeps things moving along quickly, and we would need to hold the meetings, and we would need to have decisions made, you know, on everyone's part. The conservative schedule provides us with some more time. It gives us really into the early fall to to approve that scope of work and then moving forward with those additional steps, and then that looks towards a mid-March or so bond vote. The benefits to that really are the additional planning, but the cons are really, we don't, we don't really know what to expect when we when we come back to school next September or or really next next year. We don't know the state of the community, or the community members kind of get, gonna, you know, be tired and feel like they're right back to where we were before the pandemic. We just don't know. And then and then another con that we do see when we offer these are really the the holiday expenses. You know, coming into the new year, people are 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 burdened with additional bills, and the last thing they want to hear is is, you know, someone else, you know, asking for additional money as well. So that's really it, but that's that's really it on our end, but I can answer any questions that anyone has either on the schedule or on the scope of work or on the process.
I think, Michael, and I don't, I certainly don't want to speak for the board, so put me back in my lane if I'm out, if I'm out. Even even I think our conservative approach is probably a bit aggressive in terms of the the board's comfort levels and its its desire to make sure that we are kind of parsing through and having having some time to think about the scope, which is fine. And and we talked about this, you know, as at planning meetings as well. I think the most important thing to leave the trustees with this evening is that this is a conceptual plan. It's a big idea, it's a really big ambitious idea. I would I would use the word in a lot of ways, bold, you know? And I think what we want to do is we want to take a look at it now. As Jim, as Jim mentioned, and and a number of the members mentioned, you know, really kind of put a scalpel now to it and begin to think about how we would want to roll this out and then set up a plan which is board's comfort level to begin stacking onto that. And I know I have hands up, I have Randy was first and then Rosemary.
I just wanted to know, I see that the bond votes have been in March or at other times. Haven't we traditionally done the bond votes at the same time we've done the board votes, the budget votes?
We've done votes in the fall and in the same time as the spring vote. We've never done one separately in the spring.
When did we do post road?
I believe it was in the fall.
Yeah, that was a fall vote, like a week or two before the general election.
Yes.
Yeah.
That was a.
Is there a problem, do we see that we get enough turnout if we do it in the fall versus at the time of the budget? Of course, there's always an issue if you do it at the time of the budget, and there's more in terms of a bond, you might run risks of people seeing too much money and not wanting to vote in favor, so.
I think you hit it on the head.
Right, right, agree.
I had March versus May, I guess, for a for a spring vote, at least in that schedule. I mean, I agree with Joe that, my reaction was, yes, both are pretty aggressive schedules, and certainly, I I I'm big on the planning, right? So, you know, I I I do think we want to be extremely thoughtful.
Absolutely, and and Cheryl, I don't I don't mean to jump in, but and and again, because, you know, folks will be watching this at home. This is big ideas about the future. And, right, nothing's gonna happen tomorrow, but the purpose of the Master Planning Committee, even though it was years ago now, was really to sit down and think about and and have a vision for where we want to see the White Plains City School District in a decade from now, two decades, like Jim said, fifty years from now. You know, you saw in the in the proposed building at the high school that would, you know, take the place of Damon House. You have efficiency apartments in there where students would learn how to and work to learn how to live on their own. You have veterinary ASPCA, you know, in there. You have all different types of, like Jim's mentioned, you know, opportunities that we don't have right now, and this is big idea thinking. So you're right, Cheryl, definitely more time, definitely more conversation down the road. But for tonight, it was one of those to to kind of say like, oh, wow, okay, you know, here's here's what we're looking at. Sorry, Rosemary, go ahead.
No, that's okay, I just wanted to make sure the slides would be available because I feel like I just didn't read them thoroughly enough of being on the screen, so if they could be made available.
Absolutely, you're gonna be, you you'll receive the the presentation this evening. Michelle has the presentation in her inbox right now. And of course, we will make the presentation completely available, put on the website for folks to be able to watch at their leisure.
Thank you.
Look, it's very exciting for us to be thinking about the future, right? And and what we want for our school district and, you know, all the possibilities and potentialities. I mean, that 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 is certainly very exciting for all of us.
Any other question?
I just agree with what Cheryl said, I I I think it's, I know this is a lot of hard work on the folks that were part of the committee. So Anne and and Kevin and Fred and our folks, friends at H two M, thank you. Because I think this is a, again, it gets us thinking, it gets us thinking. And then, you know, there's some things, there's a lot of things we like here, and there's some things we say, well, wait a minute. But that's part of what we have to do, and I think we want to leave everything better than, better than how we found it. And this is a part of that roadmap, so thank you.
Great job, Mike.
Yeah, thank you, everyone, for for really giving us this opportunity. I mean, we're we're very, very happy and appreciative to be part of it.
Madam President, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you.
That me and Mia, thank you, everyone, very informative and yes, a roadmap. I just have to say, it's good to see Craig. I just wanted to give Craig a shout out there, and it's good to see everyone tonight. Thank you very much, and I think we can end our meeting. And a motion to end the meeting, is there?
Go move.
Second.
On your favor. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
See you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you.